Okay, let's get into our conversation here with Commissioner Christian Whitehurst. Christian, you had a busy day yesterday. You guys had a long minute. What time did you guys actually get out of there yesterday?
I didn't actually leave the building until about 6:30. So we gave the people a full day's work. They got their money's worth out of their commissioners yesterday.
Yes, they did. Boy, they definitely did. Let's talk a little bit first about the affordable housing situation, something that everybody in St. John's County wants more information on. What are, is there any new developments? I know we, we talked about a housing authority that was on the table with you guys recently. What's going on with our affordable housing situation in St. John's County?
Well, a lot. We have a lot of developments that are happening that are affordable per the HUD AMI standard. So those are, those are going up, being constructed as we speak. But for me, it kind of goes back to two years ago, I was at a legislative breakfast hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, and I made the statement that when I was sworn in, affordable housing was a problem in St. John's County, but now it's a full blown crisis.
Oh, yeah.
Sitting to my left at the time was the future speaker, now the Speaker of the House, Paul Renner. And I feel like I may have inadvertently triggered something there because during this year's legislative session, the state legislature passed something called the Live Local Act.
Okay.
Which is good. It breaks off a big amount of money to give to each of the 67 counties to address affordable housing issues, to help mitigate impact fees, to help with, with building costs and all the things. Good. We like that part. What is a little bit scary and what's on the horizon, and we're trying to figure out how to work our way through it as a local government, is now anything that is zoned commercial, anything that is zoned industrial or warehouse can now be by right, without having to come before the Board of County Commissioners, can now be built into affordable housing. So if you have, as St. John's County does, millions and millions of square feet of entitled commercial zoning parcels all over our county, that could become millions and millions of square feet of affordable housing, which we need. We need affordable housing, but to mitigate the impacts of the traffic, the schools, all, all the things, I'm not sure. We're not quite sure what that looks like. So there's help on the way. I think we're going to see a lot of affordable housing built as a result of the Live Local Act.
Okay.
But all the other questions that come with any residential development, those questions haven't quite been answered yet.
All right. Interesting. So that, that kind of was a side effect of the Live Local Act? Is that what it is or?
Correct. It's what you would refer to as a preemption, and we get preempted all the time. I think most people want county commissioners to have this great deal of power to enact any ordinance that we see fit to enact. And what most people don't realize is that we are fighting, in many cases, with one hand tied behind our back. For instance, there's a vape shop right across the street from an elementary school in my district.
Oh, that sounds healthy.
Isn't that wonderful? So bright neon signs.
Look colorful toys that they can all bring to school.
Elementary school kids riding their bikes to school past these brightly colored signs with cherries and oranges in the window. It looks like candy, right?
Yeah.
So I went to our county attorneys. I said, we need to draft an ordinance that creates a distance between schools and vape shops, like there is for a liquor store. Anything else, correct?
Yeah.
I found that there was a law preventing any local county from creating such an ordinance. So in that way, I mean, we can't say we want affordable housing, housing Live Local Act, but we don't want to hear. If it's zoned for commercial, they can buy right build to the highest density possible in affordable housing development.
Yeah, the city, the city actually has what they called, they don't officially call it, but it's kind of the red light district where they put an ordinance in like decades ago that kind of preempted some of that. And as long as the law is in place prior to the other one, you're, you're, it gives you a better chance of keeping some of those things at bay. Very similar is the city put in the ordinance for short-term rentals and houses. The county didn't have it in place, so the county has less power against short-term rentals than the city does because of the ordinance they had in place from 10 years ago. But the state locks local governments into government, be in their own government. So a lot of mandates, a lot of mandates like that, like we're blaming our city and county people for it, but the mandates come from the state or come from the national side of the state. Nope, can't do that.
It's so fun to blame our city and county people for that. That's what a lot of people think.
It's easy too, right?
Like, why not?
Oh, yeah. There's so much closer to us.
Target on your back. How does a housing authority come into play here? Is that something that we need in the affordable housing process?
So we had a decision to vote up or down on the housing authority before us a few months ago. I want to say perhaps even six months ago. I voted against it because I thought, much like the Live Local Act, I thought we would lose a lot of control. What was actually before us at that time to vote up or down on was a $300,000 allocation for one employee, an executive director and some office supplies. And I think if you've studied housing authorities all over the state and in some parts of the country, it becomes a very top-heavy government agency where, where yes, you receive some federal funding and yes, that can make some progress with affordable housing, but you lose a lot of that local control. So I think we've done a fantastic job addressing affordable housing from the local level. And knowing now that we're going to have the Live Local Act, I think we're going to see the affordable housing issue addressed by both the state and the local levels. And we can do that far more effectively closer to home than we could by trying to jump through all the federal hoops that we'd be required to jump through.
Yeah, it's, it's just a tough situation. It's got to be a tough situation for you guys. And you know, it is for us as people who work in St. John's County. It's, it's just tough to afford. And I know there's, you know, the standards of affordable housing, right? And I think our median income now is like $88,000 a year, which is well above what many, many people in the county are actually making.
Yeah, the household.
Yeah, the median household income.
Yeah, the median is like 49 and the household is like 88.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. So it's tough, but boy, it's, you know, you know, it's something we need to address sooner than later, obviously, or else we're just pricing our, pricing people out of the county. And we're, we're already seeing that happen. But I know it's, it's high on you guys' radar because people are talking to you guys about it all the time, I have to imagine.
That's correct. And again, I think we've taken a number of steps. You're going to see hundreds of units available for purchase that fall within that HUD qualification of 60, 80, 120% of AMI. So we're, we're taking strides. It's never going to be done fast enough, but it, but it's happening.
I have a question for you about, we talked about Tallahassee. We're about to lose some very powerful positions in Tallahassee. How is the county commission preparing for that? I mean, we're losing Stevenson, we're losing Renner and Hudson's. All three of them are going to be coming out of positions of power where we had a lot of power and a lot of money coming to St. John's County. How are we preparing for that drop in, I'd say juice in, in Tallahassee?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be difficult after next year's legislative session because then we'll have a bunch of freshmen coming in again. Right now is the very best time to, to make your requests of your legislative delegation. We have Senator Hudson who's in leadership. We have the Speaker of the Florida House representing the Southern Third of St. John's County. We have Bobby Payne, who is, when redistricting happened, he was drawn into the Eastern, I'm sorry, the Western Boundary of St. John's. And of course, Representative Stevenson, who used to be a county commissioner, who understands the issues that affect the county. She's been representing us. This will be her eighth and final year as our state representative. So I took a trip to Tallahassee with staff this year just to be the squeakiest wheel I could possibly be to get funding. And as a result, we saw a record amount of funding come back from Tallahassee. I mean, St. John's County's never gotten that much for, for our needs, but yet we need much, much more. So I'll be going back again next year. And I would encourage everybody, if you have something that you want to see done for St. John's County, if we need funding, make those requests now. Start today. Session happens, I believe it's going to happen in January next year. And that'll be our last opportunity to have these sort of power players in Tallahassee for a long, long time.
And I think the last time you were here, well, I know last time you were here, we were talking a little bit about that, the sales tax increase. And obviously that did not get passed. However, like you mentioned, we're, we're getting record amounts of money coming in. Is any of that money helping offset what you guys had planned for that one cent sales tax? Is any of that money going to help us in those areas?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say it doesn't help. It helps a lot. But when you have, we had a list of $500 million infrastructure challenges.
10 libraries, 10 libraries that were to put up.
I'm not, I'm not sure it was 10, but I know we had a few libraries on the list.
$50 million for a library or something.
I know. Well, I think that was the Sheriff's Command Center. Sheriff's Command Center, there was fire stations. Obviously, there was, you know, 100 plus miles of road.
Five million, wasn't it?
Five million. Okay, sorry.
Sorry. There you go. 50 million, five million. It's all the same, right?
What's a zero bucks friend?
Sorry, go ahead.
So the money from Tallahassee certainly helps, Pete. I mean, that's, that's, you know, it would be unfair to say it doesn't help. But we have yet to address the $500 million of infrastructure challenges that we're faced with. In fact, we had a presentation, presentation from Joy Andrews yesterday, who said that that number's grown to $700 million of capital improvement needs in St. John's County. And so we are doing the very best we can. As you know, we're charging the maximum impact fee that we can per statute on residential development. So we cannot get more money from development. We are doing everything we can to come up with creative solutions. I've been to Washington DC this year, hat in hand, asking for money from the federal government. I've been to Tallahassee this year, asking for money from Tallahassee. I'm doing everything I can that, that is legal. And I'm considering some things that are illegal, but, but staff won't let me do it. I'm doing everything I can to, to think outside the box and come up with solutions to fund the, the needs of this county. So.
I saw, when I was watching yesterday, something about the bond that you guys are going after. How, how is our bond rating and how is that going to affect our ability to borrow money for some of these, like you said, some of these capital, the CIPs, the capital improvement projects?
Yeah. So Jesse Dunn has done a masterful job of running the Office of Management, Management and Budget over the years, so much so that Moody's raised our rate from double A plus to triple A within the last 18 to 24 months. We now have a triple A rating per Moody's. And that allows us to get the best possible rates on, on a bonding. So, so yeah, we're going to see our staff pursue bonds for parks, for four regional parks. Now, it might take 10 years to get those built, but I think that will fundamentally positively impact our parks and rec like we've never seen before in the history of St. John's County. It's something I'm very, very excited about. We also have the potential to bond for three fire slash sheriff stations in areas of need for, for public safety in St. John's County. So that's something that we're looking at, and that's only possible because of the fiscal responsibility by Jesse Dunn over these many years.
All right, let's get into some of the, let's get into some of the juicy stuff, huh? Let's talk a little bit about this Hunter Conrad situation, because I got to tell you, a lot of people are just, a lot of people are just confused. It's slightly confusing. So I'm hoping you can clear some of this up for folks. I know it's, it's probably a little confusing for you guys too. And it all happened very, very quickly.
Yeah.
I'll start by saying this. It seems like the accusations against Hunter Conrad, from what we know as the public, seemed relatively minor. But so I guess my first question is how and why, just days after Commissioner Arnold's accusations on his treatment of county staff, how did you guys organize this meeting so quickly? And I guess, why wasn't this done publicly? Should it have been done publicly, making this decision to have this performance review? Or how does that process even work with you guys?
I think after Commissioner Arnold made her comments at the end of our June 20th meeting, I started picking up the phone. Well, first of all, I went up to Hunter's office afterward and I said, is, is any of this true? I'm going to have to call staff and do some fact finding. So we had a, a good conversation where he sort of explained his position. And I said, look, I'm going to have to call staff based on what I just heard downstairs. And he understood that.
Can you elaborate on his position at all, on what that was?
I can't, I won't. Well, first of all, we signed a non-disparagement agreement with, with Mr. Conrad yesterday. So, so I can't really elaborate on any conversation that I had privately, but, but I wouldn't care to, you know, it's a private conversation. I, it's not my intent to ever make anybody look bad or throw anybody under the bus.
Oh, sure.
I'm interested in just doing.
I was just wondering what his perspective on it was, because we just haven't heard that. Nobody's heard that.
Oh, I think you heard it on the floor, on the record. I mean, he, he didn't, he didn't agree with Sarah's assessment that there was this culture of fear, intimidation that, that she stated that there was. But I called around, I made some calls to staff. I made some calls to ex-staff. I made some calls to ex-commissioners. I made some calls to just people in the community that I knew who had done business with St. John's County, just to get a sense for what was going on and what their experiences were.
Yeah.
After having those conversations, I asked Hunter to meet me on, on Monday morning for a cup of coffee. And I did, I explained to him, I thought it was best that he resign after having some of those conversations. So again, I can't really get into the details. Those private conversations are private. I don't think staff really has a desire to be out front telling their story. I mean, you've seen some people go to the media and go on the record. Some people who are ex-staff in St. John's County, but I asked Hunter to resign. I did call a special meeting for Friday because I thought that we'd be able to accept the terms of the resignation. We didn't get Hunter's resignation until Thursday. So then I canceled the meeting because each commissioner needs time to review those terms of resignation. And it wouldn't be fair to ask people to turn around in 12 to 18 hours to, to vote up or down.
So going into that performance review, which is basically what, what was scheduled for that Friday, you guys had a pretty good idea that there was going to be a resignation coming from that?
Well, I asked him for a resignation. And again, I, I anticipated getting it sooner than Thursday.
Okay.
But, but you know, we, we didn't get it until late Wednesday night or Thursday morning. So.
All right. So yes, in yesterday's meeting, there was three things that came out of this. There was the accepting of Hunter's resignation and the NDA. And then you had to decide if you're doing the nationwide search and then you appointed Joy Andrews. So with the NDA, and I was a part of an NDA 12 years ago, 14 years ago, so I understand how that works. And it's just, it doesn't always look like it's, it doesn't always appear on the up and up, but sometimes it protects both sides of, of the situation and you can move forward from it. Some of it's little minutia stuff and things like that that just doesn't need to be aired out. And respectfully for Hunter, I, I, I kind of get that because I lived it. So. But let's move forward on, on that. The decision on the national search. How, I know you said you wanted to get it wrapped up in 90 days. Do you think that's really possible to get done within the 90 days timeframe?
I would just point to the response from our HR director. She said, yes, that that was enough time to, to get qualified candidates in the building and have, have them review the, the applications and the resumes. And yeah, she thinks that we can get some quality candidates in the door to compete for the job.
Okay. What, what are some of the traits you, you as the chairman would be looking for to be in this position at this point?
Well, I don't want somebody who's, who's looking at this job posting from Ohio and thinking, well, it'd be really great to get out of the snow, you know? You're not coming here for a paid vacation. We need to get results. You know, I've been pushing our staff very, very hard and, and I hope fairly, but we need to get results for the people that we represent. I hope every person in the building feels the pressure that I feel from 300,000 residents to make it, make it changes, positive changes to mitigate the growth that we've all seen in these last 20 years. I want somebody who's going to be willing to think outside the box, who's willing to work morning, noon and night to get those results. So, so I think that's what we're looking for, Troy. Somebody who's going to be aggressive, somebody who's going to be listening to commissioners, listening to community stakeholders, and they'd be willing to go out there and work their guts out to get results for our community.
And, and the committee that seems to be already established, that, that was one of the things that kind of bothered me from the outside. It seems like it's already been established, but I didn't see anybody from the business world who is probably most affected by the decisions made by the politicians on that board.
The search committee.
The search committee.
Sure.
You know, so I mean, the, everybody I saw on the list was working internally within the government. And there was no outside voice or business voice on that, on that committee. Was that ever a thought that, that came into play for that committee?
Well, I asked Jerry Wilson to serve on the committee because of his experience in the private sector. I mean, you know, he was a vice president of Coca-Cola. He worked internationally for many, many years. He's worked on the amphitheater transition from, from being government to a private 501(c)(3) operation. He's worked on the Ponte Vedra Concert Hall. So I consider him as a bright mind from the private sector. He is sort of the.
How long has Jerry been here?
I'm not sure. He's only been here for a handful of years, but I think in that time, he's, he's done a good job of understanding. I mean, I think the fact that he's been so involved with the amphitheater, so involved with the Ponte Vedra Concert Hall. Do you have a recommendation? Perhaps you could help me?
Oh, the guy right upstairs. Mike Davis. I mean, you know, his, his family business has been here for 54 years. Mark Bailey. You know, I can come up with, you know, people that have lived through the growth, been through several recessions, been through several different commissioners and, and been through several different administrators and understand the true history of St. John's County. Jerry seems to be a very intelligent and, and good guy, but he doesn't have the history. And I see him still being internal because of the way the amphitheater's been separated. So that's, that's, that was.
Well, I appreciate the feedback. I will say this. Eddie Kramer, who's our property appraiser, really smart guy, comes from finance and banking. He texted me while the meeting was going on to tell me that he could not serve on the committee. So we have an opening. So we have, that's why I asked you.
I would like it to be a, a private, you know, just from my personal looking in, it's like, wait, these guys all are kind of connected. I would like it to be a business person that has ties over decades within the community.
Okay.
You know, and there's, there's plenty out there. I mean, there's, there's, there's a bunch of people out there that are in the private industry and, and Eddie, Eddie, because his banking would have probably been, been fine. But I mean, he's, he's now, he's now a government guy. So.
Understood.
Yeah.
So that's, that's good feedback. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that, that would be nice to see. A long time local who really understands the environment to help out with that. I think that's a great suggestion. Now, I want to circle back on some of the, some of the events over the last couple of weeks, because obviously these guys at the table, we've got a lot of insights on this. We've got questions of our own, but you know, you guys get like 100 people watching the county commission meeting. So not everybody out there watching us has the fullest understanding of what's going on as we might have. There was a report of people being scared of Hunter Conrad to come back into the building. It was, it was said that he was banned from the county commission building. Were you scared for your safety around Hunter Conrad?
No, I was, I was at no time scared of Hunter or by Hunter. So, so no.
Why do you think that happened?
I really can't comment on that. I just, I can't comment on it. So I will, I will say this. I know a decision was made at one time to have Hunter's badge access turned off. Just can't go into the reasons why that was done, but that, that did happen.
Can I ask you in this whole situation, what do you think that we learned as a county?
Well, I, I don't know if there's any one big lesson. Maybe there's a series of.
Because you guys believed him at one point. I mean, it was, he was an amazing voice for you, right?
He just got a $30,000 raise a few months ago.
Right, exactly. So that was like, that's what I see as a layman. I'm just like, oh, there was obviously this swift change in a moment of inertia. And I'm sure that, that had to affect you personally too, and professionally. So what did we learn as professionals in this moment? Is it more listening to people more? Is it, is there more vetting process? Is there a customer, internal customer service, you know, look at there? What, what did we learn here?
Well, I think it's, I think what we learned is what Henry Dean said back on the June 20th meeting. Keeping a board of five is very, very hard to do. Keeping a board of five happy, I should say, is very, very hard to do. You're dealing with five very independent thinkers who have different expectations of what government should do and how it should be done. It's a very difficult job being county administrator. I think the, the average lifespan for a county administrator is two and a half years. Hunter made it three and a half years. That's above average. Hunter did a great job leading us through COVID. I think we saw that we were one of the underperforming counties dealing with the COVID-19 crisis when it was the Florida Department of Health running the show. And then, and then the county got it under Hunter's leadership with the fire department and the sheriff flanking him. Did a fantastic job. I think we have a lot of good things to show for Hunter's leadership and, and the things that happened under Hunter Conrad's administration.
But when you watch shows like House of Cards, you see like sometimes that stuff really does happen. Is this one of those situations where it was kind of, I hate to use the word witch hunt, but kind of, was it? Was there, was it like the dominoes falling on top of him? Or was there the facts there?
Yeah, I would say there, there's definitely meat on the bone in terms of people's reasons for being upset with Hunter.
Yeah.
It, it's not a witch hunt. I don't think that's fair. I don't think anybody that knows what's going on behind the scenes would, would use that word.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, I've, I've had bad hires. And like at the end of the day, I was just like, wow, I possibly could have seen this or I could have seen that. You know, just over my decades of hiring people and stuff like that. At some point did you feel like, okay, we could have done a better job with this and avoided this? You know, and, and I don't want to beat up on Hunter. Hunter, Hunter, to me, has always been a good guy towards me and stuff like that. So I don't want to beat up on him because there are always a lot of different circumstances. But as a boss being in that position, I know where I was like, okay, what could I have done differently? Are you looking at that process with the next process right now?
Yeah. So you may or may not know, I was not a commissioner when Hunter was hired the first time, right? When Mike Wancheck was fired, I was not yet on the board. I think that we've, we've learned lessons from the way that all went down, which is why we're going out for a national search. We had a lot of good things going for us. When we decided to renew Hunter's contract back in March, you know, we have 100 projects spending over $280 million. That's the most that's ever been done in the history of St. John's County. So you look at what's being done and sort of the initiative that's being taken to go out for the bonding solutions for parks and, and public safety. There are good things happening. And I think we all felt confident in, in renewing the contract. Other things come to light after that, and then you have to take action. If not, you're not doing your job as a commissioner. And I think we're spread so thin, we're running all over the county. We're elected countywide. I'm down in Hastings. I'm out in Crescent Beach. I'm all over the county, meeting with people, serving people.
But you didn't hear about any of these complaints going on while, while all they were happening or nothing?
I mean, the short answer is no. The short, the short answer is no. I am really, I'm working.
I'm sad you guys didn't know, like of anything, because there's so many employees out there that were just really upset. And I can't believe that their voice wasn't heard. That's the only reservation I have in this whole situation.
Well, I think you have to ask yourself whether or not they felt comfortable coming to commissioners with their concerns.
Okay, okay.
Fear of whistle blow.
I think when Commissioner Arnold made the statements that she made, I think it made a lot of people feel confident now to come forward.
Yeah. It's kind of like one of those situations where you're like, oh, I'm not alone. You kind of feel like you're the only one being isolated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and that happens in corporate, happens in government, it happens everywhere. It's just like, you know, that's the reason we have whisper.
I've always been a norma ray in my life. I've always been a big mouth. So like, we have no.
Shocking.
I know. But there are people that don't know how to do it.
Well, there's a whistleblower, blowback. And we're in a different society than where we were 20 years ago. This would have never came out 20 years ago. It would have stayed in, in the locker room. It would have been, you know, everything would have been locked down. You guys would have never heard about any of it 20 years ago. But the generation now is more like your personality. It's like, hey, I'm not attached to this career. I can, I can say what I want to say.
Say something, yeah.
You know, because society's not attached to their careers anymore. You know, it's like, you might stay at a job four or five years and move on. That didn't happen 30 years ago.
Yeah.
You stayed in that career the entire, your entire life.
Yeah, my dad's 40 some odd years at the bank. Absolutely. I get it. Yeah.
So I mean, that's just kind of the way it was. So it's, it's good that we were able to get this and, and Commissioner Arnold, you know, she, she really did a good job of stepping up to the plate. So.
Now I've got one more question about this topic and then, you know, we're going to move on. Got some more. I want to talk to you a little bit about the local GOP, because I know you've commented on this a couple of weeks ago. And I just want to get your take on what the heck is going on.
But what the heck is going on?
But before we get there, I just got one more question on this situation. And I think a lot of people find it interesting. And maybe you can just elaborate on this for me, what you guys' thought process was, that obviously this whole thing started over employees being censored out there at the county commission, right? And then I know you guys accepted the resignation last night in full, which included the terms of, as you mentioned before, this non-disparaging agreement, which basically says that nobody can really talk about this situation. Nobody can really say anything negative about the situation, right? Am I understanding that right? So how is it that he's getting ousted? And again, I'm just passing along concerns that I've heard, right? How is it that he's getting ousted for censoring employees? And then we see you guys basically turn around and say, okay, well, we're going to censor everybody from talking about this now. Like, what was the thought process there?
I think the thought process is that it's best for county operations if we're all moving forward, if we're focusing on the work. That's what we're there to do. I think this is, if we all start shooting at each other, calling each other names, airing all the dirty laundry, I think it's, it makes for good TV. I think. It's a lot of fun. If you're on the outside looking in, we want answers. I think at the end of the day, though, what people really expect from the government is to get things done. And I think it would be harder for us to get things done if we're out there airing dirty laundry, if Hunter's on the record talking about us and we're on the record talking about Hunter. Hunter's got five small children at home. He is a person.
Right.
And frankly, he did some good things for St. John's County. So we have people involved here. We have staff who are reluctant to get out there and get on the record. If this ever were to get into litigation, they'd have to go into a courtroom. And I, I think it saves a lot of real people who have real families and real lives a lot of heartache if, by, by putting this non-disparagement in, in place. And we get to move forward and just focus on doing the work of St. John's County, which is what we're there to do. And we're not here for, for clicks and for TV and all the things that might seem like a lot of fun. We need to get the work done.
And I can tell you from personal experience, because I'm probably the only one in the room that signed an NDA with this county. The results are always going to end up being almost the exact same, but now we're months ahead of where we were. So I, I understand the NDA, you know, unless there was something criminal involved, that would be completely. You know, unless there was something criminal involved, that would be completely different. But if, if there's not anything criminal involved, the result's going to be, we're going to get a new county administrator. The old county administrator's out and now we just have to not slow down the process to healing ourselves. So I understand the NDA, there's going to be a lot of people that are going to create amazing rumors. I mean, they're going to be fun. The rumors are going to be fun. But you know, there are going to be rumors. So I mean, I know the rumors that happened about me, I was like, wow, I did that, you know? So I mean, you know, so I mean, I got to hear them. And so I mean, I lived through it and it's, it's not good for the county. And the reason I stepped away when I stepped away is it was no longer good for the people that were working with me if I tried to stick around and fight what I needed to fight.
Yeah. And this applies to all county personnel because I know Sarah Arnold herself yesterday in the meeting said, you know, I really don't agree with this, but she went forward with signing it. So does that, or she agreed to it, does that, um, does that apply to all county staff?
It does. And I think you heard me question, how enforceable is this really to our attorney who's up there making the presentation? So, so I think we all have questions about to what extent can you really hold 1,400 county employees?
Right.
I don't, I don't think anybody reasonably expects 1,400 county employees to never, ever talk about this. But the agreement is in place.
Yeah. Okay.
It'll come out.
It will. Yeah. Is there ramifications against the employees if that does come out? I mean, is there, are you guys going to say, oh, well, you terminated the agreement that we signed for you, um, you're out of here.
You'd have to ask our attorneys about that. I'm sure they would know what the legal consequences of that are. I'm not really sure, Pete, to be honest with you. I think we're trying to end this thing peacefully in the best interest of the county.
Yeah. Yep. All right. Moving on to, well, more drama. It doesn't, it doesn't stop right now. You, I saw you quoted in a, in a recent article about the, the local GOP chair, Blake Patterson, I believe is his name. He had a very interesting meeting recently where apparently tried to, he asked a couple of people to sit down and there was a huge argument over this where the police were called and assault charges were brought up. What do you make of this situation? And is Mr. Patterson still the chair? Should he still be the chair? What do you think? Cause you were part of this at one point, right?
Absolutely. I used to be the vice chair of this organization under Brandon Paddy. And what the, what the, um, REC has always been there to do is just grassroots effort. We're going to go knock on doors, we're going to fight to get good Republicans elected and we're going to band together and support Republican candidates. Pretty basic stuff from any political party. If you're the DEC, you would do the same thing. You're there to get Democrats elected. So as the, as an REC, you have a pretty ministerial role in just doing grassroots efforts. I don't know what the heck is going on over there, but it's not that. They've gotten far, far afield from what they're supposed to be doing. And what was most upsetting about the video that I saw, which is really the, the body cam.
Yeah.
They have had a deputy standing in the room because things have gotten so heated between two or three different factions in the REC. And what was so upsetting about Blake's tone is that it was really anti-law enforcement. He's berating this deputy.
That was very disappointing.
Essentially, you know, bending to his will, do, do what I tell you, we're paying you, you should do what I'm telling you to do. And the deputy's saying, well, no, I've got to follow the law.
Yeah.
These, these guys aren't necessarily breaking the law and Blake can't handle being told no. That's what I heard in the body cam. So being a Republican, and I, I know everybody supports law enforcement, but Republicans have taken a strong position to support law enforcement over the years. And to hear this anti-law enforcement tone coming from the chairman of the Republican Party, yes, that upset me. And I went on the record to discuss that. No, Blake Patterson should not be the chairman of the Republican Party. He doesn't, um, he doesn't carry with him our values. He doesn't carry with him the mission of being the REC chair. He should resign.
Is there a splintering going on in the Republican Party right now? You know, on a national level, we see the Trump folks going against the DeSantis folks, right? And this is personal for us. I mean, obviously DeSantis lives right down the road. Are you concerned about the state of the Republican Party at all? Is it, is it splintering off? Is it going in a different direction right now? What's your take?
No, I'm not concerned. I do think that we have a very vocal minority with some radical ideology. And I think that it's really those folks that make it seem like it, like there's a splinter. I think the core Republicans who have always been Republicans and who share our values, they're the same people that they were 10 years ago, 20 years ago. And, and those folks are the people who are the core of the Republican Party. So no, I'm not worried about the state of the Republican Party. I'm worried that we've been infiltrated by, by some radicals with some sort of crazy ideologies.
And that's, that's usually the case. I mean, when, when things start to evolve, I mean, different opinions tend to look rad. Is, is this really radical or is this just a situation where maybe everybody needs to come together and find some middle ground here? Because the party is evolving as, as these things do. And we can't, you know, you can't always have the same old 80-year-old guys with their views dictating what happens. So there, is there any, is there any middle ground between the two? Cause it doesn't seem like this faction that you call radical of Republicans is going anywhere. It seems like this seems to be part of the new wave. So where's the common ground?
Yeah. I think you just stick to the core tenets. I mean, we are for less government, not more government. I think we're for more freedom, not less freedom. And I think as long as you stick to those core tenants, you're going to be fine, regardless of what your personal thoughts are on some of these other issues. But that's not what we're hearing. I think we're hearing, they want more government, they want more restrictions on people's freedoms. And that's not ever been a part of what the Republican Party is about. So that's what concerns me.
Okay. Fair enough. One more thing before we let you go. I know you've been sitting in front of a microphone and a camera for way too long over the past couple of days. I know you're probably sick of it by now, but Sarah Arnold did bring up a proposal to purchase a home. This is on West King Street and this is the Zora Neale. Zora Neale Hurston.
Right off.
Home. Yeah. What do you think of this? I know this is pretty new for you guys, but what are your thoughts on this historic home, right?
Well, she brought it up at the end of a very long meeting and so it was, it was difficult to process. She was trying to get $239,000 moved to purchase the home. And I think we grow complacent in St. John's County. We have so much history and a lot of it's really cool history. And it spans from the Spaniards coming here in the 1500s to the Menorchens to, I mean, we have a lot of African-American history, civil rights history here in St. John's County, and it's important and it must be preserved. And so I think I commend her for bringing it up. I think the, the purchasing process, being that we are government, has to work a little bit different than if we were a private buyer and we just wanted to go slap $239,000 down on the table. But I think it was a great move that she brought this up and that she recommended staff pursue.
Well, we have some history, we have some history of doing this. I mean, we bought Stetson Kennedy's home, specifically Lake, Lake Valuthahatchee. And Zora, Zora Neale Hurston and Stetson worked together on the WPA project. Zora didn't live here. I think she was from Eatonville, but she lived here briefly during that time and worked a lot with Florida Memorial. I know she had a relationship with, uh, Rollins that wrote The Yearling. A lot of literature history is what, what we're talking about here. And right, right now we have a little tiny park for Zora, but this would be kind of a cool, a cool project. Because not only did Zora live in this home, but another civil rights person lived in this home. You know, I can't give away that name because I don't know if they want to have it out there or not because you're negotiating. But this home has a lot of historic significance. And when we bought Valuthahatchee, we kind of said, we're earmarking this. And I think you guys, what you decided to do was do a letter of intent and then figure out how to pay for it.
Correct.
And that's kind of how we did Valuthahatchee too. We did get some state funding from it. So hopefully we can reach back into some of that with the historic side of it.
Big price difference though, I would imagine in buying that home. When was that purchased?
No, it was purchased, it was purchased 20 years ago and it's probably, it's probably pretty close to the same price. So it was, I think, I think Valuthahatchee was like 170 something. It was not huge. And then we bought the house next to it to create the park.
Right.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Whitehurst, I thank you for coming in this morning. I think that's all we got for you at the moment. Well, thank you. I think we covered a lot of ground. We covered a lot of ground to the point where we don't have time to cover most of the stuff we even wanted to cover. Greatly appreciate your time, greatly appreciate your insights, your work on the commission. We, uh, we say it all the time, we do not envy working on the county commission whatsoever. You've got a huge target on your back. Half the people are happy with you, half the people not so happy with you all the time. So we do appreciate your, your work and, and working for the county and thank you for coming in this morning.
This has been an absolute pleasure. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.